All the members of the governance committee, the order on Sullivan at eleven A M. My name is Colin, member and governance committee chair. We can go around the room.
Senator Justin, Chief Economic Officer.
Attorney General, Chief of Human Resources.
Right.
Melanie Sutton, head coordinator.
Deputy Assistant Mayor Sullivan, Executive Assistant.
Attorney General, Board Member.
Kelly Weston, Board Member.
And diving in, first item, first item discussion, policy review of the twelve and thirteen hundred support policy. School connected organizations, volunteers, citizens to school, public complaints handled. We won't read through it all, but did anybody have anything that they looked at that they wanted to be addressed? Of course, screening is on a lowly routine basis, but they could be addressed at any time. People look at it later. See no one rushing to.
Twelve sixty.
I'm not sure what the rules are post COVID. Every, well, my experience is pre-COVID kind of, but I know there is a screening to some degree for volunteers. I, I don't know what the process is.
Sorry, you have to fill out something online for each school or for any tenant that you're in the schools. They do a check. They have to get you cleared before you are able to go into the schools.
And that's the volunteer.
Volunteer.
Just.
Sorry, volunteers.
And we were moving to a district wide electronic login. Did that happen?
We're doing the pilot of the Raptor visitor.
Gotcha.
Boy, that's kind of rough name for a visitor's school.
Interesting name.
The marketing people didn't.
The reason I wanted to refresh my memory about this is because in the recent A E A contract, it was language related to this too. My memory is this seems consistent with what's in the contract. So I don't see a split.
Any other questions, anything anybody wants to look at? Senator will roll on to propose board policy fifty one thirty one, education.
So I am not a member of the governance committee, but I wanted to extend my appreciation for the chance to briefly introduce this last month before I had to appropriately leave and bring my student. But I did listen to board members' questions, administrative concerns with the original document that had been drafted. That had not aligned with A A S B style and that it included some components that might better belong to A Rs. So I wanted to say that I worked to respond to those, to that feedback. And again, to reiterate that it had been written in response to the process of producing board policy fifty forty and really to partner with it. And the overall rationale to have this in place is that comprehensive and really preventative health education framework is more effective than piecemeal. Do this, do this, don't do that approach, and that it supports academic achievement. So that's, that's really the intention behind this. Okay, so what has been, what remains here is aligned with the style of the comprehensive wellness policy fifty forty. And also what remains is aligned with the WISC tool, which is the whole school, whole community, whole child model, which is from the C D C. And which I understand is also being supported by the academy tactic team in Dr. Peterson's office. So this is a vetted model that I've been aware of for actually many years, the whole school, whole community, whole child model. And it doesn't say in the language, but I wanted to be clear that my intent of this policy is that it will become effective no later than the twenty five, twenty six school year. So I think that's an important thing to share in the framing. I think it does a few things. Number one, it ensures access for all elementary students to have comprehensive health. And if you look at, we don't have numbers here, but if you look at towards the bottom of page two, towards the bottom, you'll see the elementary students will be provided at least a hundred and twenty minutes. And this is where some edits came in, or two special blocks of health education per month, unless school closures due to weather or safety concerns render time for health instruction or a health special unfeasible. So there had been some questions about, you know, what happens if there's a school closure day, do they still have to have a hundred and twenty minutes? So that was an attempt to address concerns. In response to some questions about, and then again, that a hundred and twenty minutes language, that is very similar to minute language that we put into fifty forty with respect to recess and to lunch. To sort of guarantee minimums to ensure access that all students in elementary school had to be critical pieces of their instruction. So it's got some flexibility here and sort of pins down some what if scenarios. And it could be in an A R, but, but again, in fifty forty, we do have, I mean, that's right again for recess and lunch. And then just as a backdrop for all of us, you know, I think that it's important to recall that recently we've all received a great deal of public feedback about the importance of health education. So you could argue that this is, this is a good response to community members' interest in having a robust health education curriculum. So, so it does say that the elementary students would be provided at least a hundred and twenty minutes. And down, as we sort of move, move through their educational experience, and then we start thinking about what does middle school look like? And I rewrote this to accommodate administrative concerns about the previous language. So current now in the, in the redrafted version of fifty one thirty one, it says at a minimum, sixth grade students enrolled in middle school shall be provided no less than one quarter of health education. And I spoke to that in a board meeting recently, and that was based on a conversation I had with administration. So sixth graders in elementary school right now receive only eighteen or so hours of health education in, as, as an elementary student. Interestingly, sixth graders in middle school currently have a semester. So this is in between, and it simply says at a minimum, our sixth graders are going to get that quarter of health education. So that will also allow additional time for sixth grader to middle school to increase their access to C T courses and other elective opportunities. So that was a key response to some administrative concerns. And then it also clarifies that at a minimum, eighth grade students in middle school shall be provided one semester of health education. And it's really important that they get comprehensive, comprehensive health education at that, a moment in their lives when they are impressionable. And they're going to be making various decisions with how they behave, how they treat themselves. So they need that time to receive comprehensive information and have time to reflect on, on how they want to shape the course of their lives. So that defines a couple of, I guess, educational parameters. And I wanted to speak to the top of page three, which says at a minimum, to meet the requirements of law policy, all high school students shall take point five of their one and a half credits of health and P E for graduation. As current, as outlined in the A S D graduation requirements as a non-waivable comprehensive health course. And this is, this is a change, but it would align with the academy rollout and possible restructuring that we might see, you know, in the starting twenty five, twenty six school year. But right now, we don't have comprehensive health education in our high schools, to my understanding. And the tool, this, this whole school, whole community, whole child tool, we use something similar in grading ourselves for our wellness policy. We get a big fat zero right now for having a required health education course in high school. You know, remember Donnelly, you spoke to infant care. That's something that I should envision being part of a comprehensive health education. It's not listed in here, but maybe, you know, Melanie Sutton, you could speak to, could you speak to the elements of a comprehensive health education? You have to go sideways.
A comprehensive health education takes a look at the ten areas that are listed above in that policy. So you're looking at things about safety, you're talking about family and life cycle, you're talking about nutrition, you're looking at body systems, fitness aspects. So basically a well-rounded wellness approach to health. And it's not a piecemeal as a member of lessons indicated earlier, like where you just invite the parent and then you talk about safety. Talking about lots of different aspects of safety as well as advocating for your own personal health and health of others around you, wellness factors related to environment. And taking personal responsibility for your own health.
Yeah.
I had a question at the meeting about cold weather training.
Also included.
What, is that included in that course curriculum?
Yes, sir, it's part of our safety.
I know it's really easy to get that kind of curriculum because everybody that went out on the pipeline, we got cold weather training before they let you work.
And when necessary, we also include it in our physical education approaches at all of our levels when we talk about going outside and gearing up properly for the weather to engage an activity.
So, and then the one other thing that I thought I would mention, so within, on the topic page two, I'm kind of bouncing around. It does list key components of a comprehensive health curriculum, injury prevention and personal safety, functions of the body, nutrition, community health and safety, the emphasis on violence prevention, self-worth, mental and emotional health. So I know that S B twenty four has made some movement right now through the legislature. So mental health is embedded in this definition of health. So it would be in line with, and it may come out of this legislative session. Other components. Yes.
Is this?
Where'd it come from?
Is this, so is everything here a policy or is this an explanation of a policy and then an actual policy?
Well, it was written, it was written in the style of the wellness policy, which began with a little bit of a purpose. And I thought that it would be useful to have definitions, and I suppose the policy itself is what begins under health education. But my intention would be to have the purpose and definition sections as well.
I see, okay.
So it may not be perfectly aligned with what the A A S B does, but this is something that is a, again, it's a product of community feedback from the fifty forty review cycle. There was an expression of future, of an intent, it was an expression of a desire to have a future comprehensive health education policy. And so this is the product of that community interest.
Can I actually just mention that member Jacobs, member Wilson and member Pat, he thinks they're on the.
Thank you, I realized that, forgot to ask. Any questions or comments in regards to the proposed policy?
I, I wasn't here the last meeting, so I didn't have any chance to say, but I've read through this pretty a lot, year old one, year new one and everything. The one thing that I am concerned about, and I just want to get it out there, is this, the half a credit in high school. It's a non-weighted credit, so those kids that are in A P I B courses, their G P As will go down with the non-weighted credit. We have a number of kids that are in numerous sports because they are going so that they can get the K waiver, so they can do more A P I B courses to, you know, they're on their way to. These help brand colleges and applications and scholarships and stuff, so that's one area. And then I anticipate us coming back next year with the academy's rollout, looking at graduation requirements. And if we add in a graduation requirement right now, I don't know how it's all going to fit into it. So that's, that's my concerns about, you know, that high school piece. It, it also really limits if we don't change schedules, what we can do as far as building a schedule or master schedule. Anytime we add in a requirement, I know it takes away from P E, but when we add in a requirement, it's a graduation requirement, it takes away the ability to create schedules in more. So I don't know.
Yeah, especially it's smaller. Like you remember where should be at where you're balancing a lot of competing needs and master schedule, the more singleton courses that are prescribed that a student has to take, the more difficult it is to, to build that master schedule. I'll use my own daughter as an example. Within the confines of the sixth period day, students are already very confident in the choices that they have. Many kids who have specialty interests or want to be on advanced track, use sports to get the K waiver in order to weave out of P E so they can free up something in their schedule. Right, so my daughter even took a course before her ninth grade year because she couldn't, she wanted orchestra, plays the violin. She's always been into art and she wants to take a whole language, so she sees herself as college bound. So she actually took one of her core classes or three of basically all three of those languages. You know, she may not do that next year because she realized that, that she's taking a lot of extra things. But something like this that's prescriptive takes that ability of age and kids, right? So whether they're R O P C or they're a fine artist kid or they're a band orchestra kid, this starts to limit their ability in those other elective areas. And I'm not saying that health is important, it is, it's a balancing act between all those things. I don't strike that right balance, but with our current scheduling preparation, this would constrain a lot of kids from what they're currently doing. And we have had a lot of conversations that I've been part of over the last ten years around graduation requirements. And as each individual area has advocated for maybe a particular graduation requirement to be brought to, or there's been sort of a hole to say, let's wait until we can look holistically at all the graduation requirements together. Because if we single out one thing and prioritize it, sometimes it definitely has something else. Until you look at all the pieces together, it's really hard to make that sort of cost benefit analysis. So calling out one specific credit in high school policy limits that conversation going forward potentially to. But I don't know how to address your concern of making sure the health gets addressed in high school. These are just legitimate challenges.
I appreciate the feedback, right, religious, right, for the board is sort of the what and administration is the how, and I respect that the how is very challenging. I feel like this is a personal anecdote, but there was a young man, I was a freshman in college, who weeks into being in our residential college program, drank himself into oblivion that night, fell outside, cracked his head open, had skull surgery, and there went the rest of his freshman year in college. That's an anecdote, it has nothing to do with the English school district, but I say that out of thinking that the topics that are brought up in a comprehensive health class, like how to deal with drugs, alcohol, peer pressure, not only can help mitigate most of the concerns that we may be seeing with the stop it program, but are going to give our students opportunities to be life ready. Right, to deal with situations that will come up while they're in stu, in school and while, you know, they are young people launching their lives. Years ago, I came up, I mean, I can't, I don't know what the number was, you know, the state of Alaska has hundreds of millions of dollars of Medicaid costs that could be avoided if our population was healthier, right? I mean, there is a return on this investment that maybe we wouldn't see directly to the Anchorage School District, but as, you know, within the public realm, preparing more students for six, you know, a healthy life, the opportunity to learn about how to have better nutrition, how to not drink yourself into oblivion and fall down on a sidewalk at three in the morning. Those are valuable life lessons. I mean, we've done emergency assemblies about fentanyl, and now we have a requirement to teach at fentanyl awareness somewhere. This gives us a home for fentanyl, for C P R, for infant care, for all sorts of things that are part of being life ready, responsible citizens. So I appreciate scheduling concerns.
Not to trade anecdote for anecdote, but I think one thing we could do is go to the other content area and say, where do some of these things live? So for example, we had a great dinner table conversation in our family after our son had a drug and alcohol impact unit in his science class. And he realized that drinking, especially during adolescent years, is particularly, particularly harmful to brain development. And so he was like, I think I'm going to commit not to drink until, you know, if at all, until my mid twenties, because my brain is going to still be developing. So that was like a powerful takeaway lesson for him. So there are some of those things being taught, and I don't want the lack of a health, dedicated health class to be construed as none of these things are being addressed in high school. Because I think they are, you know, in different content areas. The question is, are they a universal experience for all kids? That's the thing that I don't know.
I think that Alaska struggles as a state with enormously high rates of suicide, with, with substance abuse, with sexual violence. These are all, I mean, our students have some of the highest risk factors in the nation. I don't have, you know, the youth risk easier survey in front of these, but the state as a whole is not doing well. And I feel like if A S D were to have a comprehensive health, an opportunity for all students to graduate with a little bit of time spent thinking about comprehensive health education, I feel like our, our community, our population, we better as a whole. That's my personal take and will be one, one, one vote here. And I will say, you know, to the students who are working really hard to expand the opportunities for, you know, challenging coursework. And they all maybe, they also may be a student athlete, it's actually maybe not fair for them to be able to waive that requirement to be able to get ahead. I don't know if you, if you have the.
I'm just bringing up those things really, because those are the things that we'll hear about.
I'm sure.
You know, I mean, that's the kind of stuff, you know, we're working on dual credit right now for colleges and that kind of stuff, college classes that kids take. And I mean, that's in the forefront of a lot of kids and families' minds. And I, I just bring this stuff up because it is, you know, it's a concern and what we have to do if this passes the school, right?
Right, no, and it's a dear concern.
You don't have a vote.
Yeah, and I don't even have a vote.
You're not just one vote, you're zero vote.
I'm zero vote here today.
I, I also had that, I was with A E A and part of the push for Aaron's Law and Bree's Law. And this is something a lot of health teachers cover, or they were covering as part of middle school health or other classes. When it became mandatory, my understanding is in a lot of schools, it went to social studies because that's the thing that captures all the kids. And it's not necessarily a, a primary area of concern for a lot of social studies teachers, but for health teachers it is, that both of those things are, are a big focus. I, I think you make the case very well that we probably should have health instruction that's mandatory. Even though it has these other impacts, but also there's a rumor swirling that there's a dramatic change to the A S D's high school schedule coming. We don't know what it is yet. More periods.
Academies of Anchorage really look at what kids have and are able to do. We've been limited to a sixth period day over the course of many, many years. And if we are, you know, we're looking at what would it be like if we went to an eight period or by four block kind of type of thing? And we're researching this stuff, that's why we haven't come forward with anything yet, because we, we have to look and see what's, what's going to work best for kids.
Member Don?
Memory is a really good point, Andy. I've heard from a lot of social studies teachers, they were trained for, they felt comfortable teaching those curriculum, they're forced on them. And especially male teachers who are teaching really sensitive subjects to female students, they felt very uncomfortable about that, but they weren't given the choice by the administration to do that. And so could some of that be incorporated into this curriculum rather than being stuck with the social studies?
Member Wilson, member Wilson would like to speak.
Member Wilson?
Yes, thank you. I, I completely agree with so much of what you're saying, Kelly, I really do. But I, I'm also very aware, because I've heard from so many of our staff, we, we've got a, as a board, we've pushed a lot of wonderful, incredible changes all coming within the next year or two. So our, our staff is, is really working hard and very stressed, quite frankly, is what I've heard and seen, for trying to adapt to all these changes. So I, I would like to hear, I, I did hear from the administration that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they're going to look into where aspects of these, this, this curriculum is being taught. I would like to hear that because I don't think it's necessarily, we, we have so little time in the day for our students. I, I would hate to see duplicated efforts, so I would like to hear where some of this information is being received and which classes in which way. But I, I'm very cautious, like you said, you, you're one vote, I'm one vote as well, but I'm very cautious to push forward additional requirements to this degree until our staff has the opportunity to really fulfill all, all of what we're asking right now.
I just had one more thing, just kind of talking about, we talked, we were talking about Bree's Law, Alaska State Children's Act, that is a yearly thing. And unless it's a requirement every year to do for every kid in our high schools. So this is a semester class, so yes, during, if these particular kids are in that class at that specific time with that curriculum for that grade level, whatever this is on, then we can do it in there, but that's not going to be the, because we have to do this each year.
And in high school, English or social studies always gets picked on because a hundred percent of kids take those classes. So if you put those classes, you can guarantee every kid gets it, if you put it anywhere else, not every kid takes those on the course.
And, and what happens with social studies is usually English has the testing.
Yeah.
And so social studies gets the others.
English and math get tested and social studies picks that piece off.
So I want to go back to the importance of the definition here of when I just, when, when the policy, central policy defines a comprehensive and effective health education program, not as piecemeal teaching, facts or questions against receipt papers, but as a later pedagogical approach, develops, reinforced throughout elementary and secondary learning experiences, which focus on clear health goals and related behavioral outcomes, is research-based, theory-driven, addresses. addresses individual values, attitudes, and beliefs, addresses individual and group norms that support healthy eating behaviors, focuses on reinforcing protective factors, addresses social pressures and influences, builds personal competence, social competence, and self-efficacy by addressing skills, provides functional health knowledge that fits and accurate and contributes, directly contributes to health decision-making behaviors, uses strategies designed to personalize education and engage students, provides age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate information that learning strategies, teaching methods and materials, incorporates learning strategies, teaching methods and materials that are culturally inclusive, provides adequate time for instruction and learning, I think that's really important, provides opportunities to reinforce skills and positive behaviors, provides opportunities to make positive connections within such others, and includes teacher information and plans for professional development and training that enhance effectiveness of instruction and student learning. I mean, at the finance meeting a few weeks ago, um, Ms. Sutton shared that our health, elementary health instructors, um, get twenty-eight hours of professional development over the course of the year. Do you have a sense of whether high school health instruction would receive a similar?
So.
Of what we, what happens currently?
What happens currently at the high school levels, we utilize department chairs for a lot of our, um, conduit to our teens at each school. So they receive training and then do reciprocal, but also we have, um, training days in August and November for all our teachers in their content areas. So the training just looks a little different at that level, but they do receive extensive training.
Okay.
Like a social studies department chair would also work with their social studies teachers, and then they would also attend an August and a November training.
Okay, so the social studies teachers who are currently tasked with.
Well, they re- they would receive in their content area, other, other trainings for other things that occur at the schools with the principals as part of the work that the principals do to support instructions in their school.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Am I coming through okay? Can you folks hear me there in the room?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, I wanted to first express support, um, as, as the other sponsoring board member of the nutrition, student nutrition policy overhaul for the, the broad concept of kind of a comprehensive, um, health class to be taught. And ideally someday to be a graduation requirement for some of the reasons that are, are mentioned in the policy and of the data publicly available that indicates the, the benefits to students. I think it dovetails with, um, our goal of being college career life ready. Uh, I do think though, um, that administration's remarks that, um, we're, we're at bandwidth capacity are well taken. And one of the things that I've learned from being on our governance committee over the past few years is that there are many well-intended policies that at one point were drafted and added into board policy that then are, then, then are intentionally or not put aside due to bandwidth limitations. And so my desire isn't to pass a policy that I think is, is wonderful and then ultimately can't be followed, um, but one that we will, um, adhere to and have the resources and bandwidth to, to adhere to for years to come. And so with that said, I, I think what I heard Mr. Lang mention was that there might be an opportunity to kind of a- address this in additional conversation surrounding graduation requirements as a whole. Um, i- if the board supported broadly speaking, expanding and centralizing, uh, comprehensive health education at the secondary level, is there a suggested path forward for how those conversations could materialize? And we were able to weigh kind of the opportunity cost, um, elsewhere in our high schoolers' day? Uh, what, what would that look like in terms of a process? When can we have those conversations in a fully informed way? I guess that's my question. Thank you.
Well, I think that, you know, that fir- first of all, I, I want to say that I agree with health education. It's just I, I need to bring up the things about the kind of the nuts and bolts of actually doing it. Um, you know, i- as far as what's going to happen in the next year, there's going to be a point where we need to come back to you in the next year to talk about all of our graduation requirements. But as we move through the Academies of Anchorage, um, work and what is it that, you know, if we move the, if we move the schedule to eight-period day, what does a kid have then? I mean, they could almost be graduating here early if we keep them the way they are. Or looking at the different apprenticeships, internships, things that open up for seniors and juniors at that point. So we have to, we are going to need to look at all of it as, as a whole. And, um, that's going to be a conversation that, um, we're, we're kind of at. As far as my staff goes, right now, we are at a, we're pretty swamped of what we can actually work on right now. Um, we're, we're sixth grade and middle school start times, um, the Academies of Anchorage, Freshman Academy, all this stuff is, it's the same people working on all the same projects. So we're kind of at a point, um, I know that this has come through Melanie's office and she's worked right in tune, but this hasn't been in front of any schools yet, any principals yet. Um, really getting, I need to be able to, and if we have new things, we need to get it in front of the people that are actually doing it too. So anything that I've said today is just my opinion, not that we've gone and looked to talk to a bigger group. Usually when we're adding stuff, we have a big group of stakeholders and, you know, I mean, everything we've done so far, there's a huge group of people working on all these. So, um, having a time to put this in, Carl, I, I don't know, um, I don't have any, do you have any ideas that, I, I just don't. Um, I mean, if you guys choose to do this, of course, we're going to work on it, we're going to, um, go for it. I mean, that's what we do with everything that you guys want us to do, but, um, I just don't know where right now we would have the bandwidth to do that.
Yeah, I think for me, I'm also in, I think there's a need for some information gathering. I'd like to definitively speak to whether these key components of a comprehensive health curriculum fits into the curriculum as its body. Uh, I think all of us have a shared goal of students having this information. It's just a matter of will it be a dedicated class or should it be embedded in other areas or some other option? Um, but I do say my instinct is that if these things aren't being covered at all in high school, that's an issue. We have to figure out how we can embed this, whether it's a classroom or not.
Can I ask, Melanie Sutton, can you speak to that concern?
So all of those things that are listed there are currently in existing health classes. It is comprehensive at elementary and the two that are in middle school, including the new one we're designing as a quarter. So there, that is how we base, um, the other video course.
So if our undergraduates graduate, we could say that our students have received the key components of the comprehensive health curriculum at some point?
In K through, um, five, in the sixth quarter, and in the K, um, semester. I'm not sure where they all are in high school though, that is, um.
Member Jacobs?
Research.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. And just to kind of follow up on my last point, I, um, I wanted to be clear. And I, I think I was pretty clear, but I just want to go above and beyond to be clear that I'm not proposing that member lessons wants to just pass a policy that we aren't sure that we can effect sure, um, at the building level. I, I'm, I'm confident in, in my work with, um, watching her lead frankly, um, and me in a supporting role, um, assist the student nutrition overhaul, um, come into being a reality that, uh, member lessons truly wants to, um, help transform and, and ensure that health education becomes kind of a pillar of key instruction, um, for all graduates. The, my hesitation comes at hearing from administration saying that they're at bandwidth. And we've passed a lot of really great policies and we have initiatives that we're all very proud of. And I think it's passed unanimously, and so the board's largely on the same page as to what the priorities are. And, um, I'm, I'm nervous about adding something that would, adding, adding another thing that, um, is very important and we, something we need to work in, um, but may cause detrimental impacts to the other initiatives we've passed and then might not be able to be implemented with fidelity, um, causing kind of that, that hollow policy, um, that isn't, um, actually being adhered to, which I think we've all seen occasionally as we've kind of reviewed policies and, and governance. And so, um, I think this is a great conversation. I think this is getting, um, the, at the end, the, the finish line process, I think is when we, for, I guess I would just ask that we consider, um, kind of taking to heart what we have bandwidth for as a district right now. And coming back to the conversation, maybe around, maybe the requirement, uh, maybe around the, the whole entirety conversation of graduation requirements. Maybe that's when we circle back to this and try to, uh, make that work. But, um, I just don't want to, don't want to have negative unintended consequences, given what's at stake for our students. I think this is too important. So those are my concerns right now. Um, but again, generally supportive of the policy and, um, the kids that I foster would benefit greatly from having this information and often we're supplementing in our home. Um, you know, in, in addition to what's being taught, um, and what they gather kind of piecemeal through, uh, their journey through ASD, this is valuable information, it's just a matter of how we implement. So appreciate the, the leeway, Mr. Chair, those are my thoughts.
Okay, I may have a question.
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobs? For Ms. Sutton, um, or anybody else? So we have an Academies of Anchorage tactic team on wellness. What is, is there a Dr. New Kids citizen here? But is there sort of a status report on what? What are they working on and how would that contribute to this?
I am not on that. I have a whole nother tactic team. Um, each of the tactic teams are reporting to the steering committee, um, through the month of April. So some in March and then beginning April, so that's when we're hearing the finality of what they're working on. Some of them, some of our tactic teams will be, be there like all the time. Like when I'm on that tactic team, it's going to be a tactic team will always be there. I don't know about that. Are you on the wellness one?
I'm.
What, what kind of things are you doing?
So the wellness tactic team is aligned to the WISP model that was referenced earlier, taking a look at each of the components under WISP model, mental health counseling, um, student support services, health education, physical activity, nutrition, um, operations facility, environment, and things like that. And so they're in the process right now. I was gathering information and like all the tactic teams referring to their community members and supporting partners in developing, um, pathways to move forward to align with CC.
So is the intention of that tactic, I'm not on any tactic teams actually, is the intention to bring forward suggestions for future action?
Um, part of that work is to look at what we're already doing. So some of the research that, um, referenced here is part of that tactic team. And then to understand, um, what is necessary to be successful, um, college career life ready.
So the tactic teams all come with their recommendations and they go into the master plan. So there's going to be a master plan around the Academy of Anchorage. And so all these different groups that are working on pieces will go into the final master plan of the Academies of Anchorage.
And you have a question. So, so right now, do we have formal health classes in high school?
Just. We have, um, not a comprehensive health class in high school, but we do have health classes such as first aid. Um, anatomy, physiology has help in it as well, which is a science-based course. We have some, um, health career type, type courses as well. So we have health courses, not a comprehensive health course. So we have the opportunity to learn more about wellness factors.
So this would create a new course?
Correct.
And so, and then being as clear, I'm reading it right, students would have to take a cap for that at some point. Is, is that possible with one FTE for comprehensive high school?
Not, not for the big ones, I just did some simple math. It's about, for the big high schools, if we jam pack people like at West, I would need eighteen sections, so that would be, uh, um, nine, that'd be at least, it'd be one, probably one and three-quarter teachers, so probably one point six FTE. So that's if we jump that.
Yeah. Um.
Question, on a possible path forward. Um, forgive me if you said this already and I'm not recalling it. Um, when does the administration imagine having a conversation about graduation requirements? What is it? Twelve months, kind of twelve months from now?
I don't know. I, I doubt it's going to be twelve months from now because we're going to be needing the information moving forward. We'll have to be in the biggest planning spot of the first round of the actual Academy's pathway courses by now. So it's probably going to be, I, I would guess, probably, I would hope that we have this before Christmas next year. Because I think next fall is when the tactic teams are going to stand up to really look at, they'll skip options. Actually, we're working on that. Is that, is that, that's, that's a, that's a different, that process is a little different. But the, they'll, they'll be.
So what I'm hearing is a concern about the bigger picture. And I'm also hearing that really the only main concern the administration may have with this current policy as drafted is the section that deals with high school. If the policy were to be brought forward without the high school component and created as a board policy where there isn't one already, it would simply recognize the board's interest in comprehensive effective age-properia health education. It would, um, define elementary and middle school access. Perhaps that's a path forward for the governance committee to move this policy forward to the board as a whole, again, without the particular high school section, with the possibility that if the board as a whole approves the policy, we could revisit the definition of high school access in a year from now, right? You can always go back and edit a policy. What?
I, I.
Are there stakeholders?
I, I don't know with the rest of you, but I don't have any issue with the rest of it. I think it's, I think I'd like that it's defined in what it is. Um, I think the one question I have from elementary, I just can't remember, you know, is a hundred and twenty minutes what elementary kids get now?
Is the current, everything that's in there is the current that is elementary. And the new, um, language reflects our current proposal for, um, middle school with a quarter at the, um, or six. That was the change. So yes, it's current and it is what we currently do.
What do you want to do?
Well, I'm, I'm interested in not changing this for a year because.
I, I think this is really.
Chair, I, I'm sorry, can, I, I didn't hear what Melanie said. I'm sorry, I'm on Zoom regarding what's currently done and what change was reflected. Can you please repeat that?
Yes, Member Wilson. So the K six, um, the K five is what we currently do that is reflected in this policy. The sixth quarter was the change we, um, which is we are now going to be enacting for next year as part of our middle school approach. And the eighth grade is what we currently do. So this policy would reflect what is going to be current practice for next school year and is currently, um, under development and enacted at the elementary and eighth grade.
Thank you.
So you, so they, they're going to teach it in sixth grade now?
Um, we do teach it right now in the sixth grade at elementary. Um, and we do teach it at sixth grade in some middle schools as a semester, in the ones that have sixth grade. This one will make it so it's a compromise between the semester course that exists in middle school right now and the one, the eighteen hours that exist at elementary to become a quarter at sixth grade middle school.
So, and that's, and that's the current, the administration's current intention.
Correct.
In any event, is to.
That's what principals have been planning.
Right, and so that will allow the sixth graders enrolling in middle school to have the pathways to success.
Family consumer higher, family consent, CTE, the, the course for the, um, uh, exploration, yeah.
But it still would guarantee sixth graders in middle school more, more than double the amount of time they currently get as elementary students. And so my six.
Instead of eighteen days a year, yeah.
Um, and so my proposal would be, plus it would allow, would be to bring, to ask the governance committee to move this policy forward with the, uh, exception of the first paragraph on the last page, which deals with high school. Um, because. Because there is a lot more to discuss about the bigger high school picture. That would enable the board to consider the policy as a whole. Should it be passed, it would begin the A A S B review process. It would just allow it to not exist in the ether for another year.
Okay, I, I'm willing to move that, but I, I would have one caveat that the, and on the second page, the injury prevention and personal safety include infant care. Some basic, basic. Because I just really believe that's right.
It currently does.
It currently does. But would you like to amend it to articulate infant care?
That's what I was proposing to do because I, I, I'm sorry, I knew it included the, the cold weather, which I also feel strongly about.
It actually fits under growth and development.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it talks about family responsibility and infant care.
Unless it's getting to the kids. I'm watching little schools have to take exquisite care of five pound sacks of fertilizer. We know.
Flower.
Yeah.
We don't usually have them to care of if they're any.
So the language would be changed? So the language would be changed. It would be that the top paragraph of the third page
Yeah.
regarding high school students would be redacted in the policy that would go forward. And then I would defer, I'm happy, I mean, if infant care is a part of the growth and development.
Yeah, I'm okay.
You're, you don't need it specifically need.
As member lessons described it without the specifying that it be in.
Okay.
Is, is that some? Is that, is that a motion?
Yes, yes.
And I'll second it. Is that clear enough or, or stamp? We're not, we're not waiting here with a vague thought. So it has been moved and seconded with the next to the last paragraph on the last page, redacted. Word infant care added, injury prevention, personal safety. We didn't, we don't, we've got representation here that is covered in part of the curriculum. Any discussion of the motion as it stands before you now? I'd, I'd like to throw in that in reading this, I, I do think we should be doing this at high school as a required class. But it does mean in essence, standing up fifteen or so stamp dedicated to a particular curriculum, needs developing that particular curriculum. And a host of other things. And I do think that should be done by the administration. But I also think it should be the board to direct them, not simply this committee. I suppose that's something we could bring to, for this part of the discussion. Should this review work. And obviously, it's going to take some time to put in. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the question before you is the proposed policy change fifty-one thirty-one is amended by the author. Polls in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It has passed and will be sent to the full board for their review. Next, board policy sixty-one fifteen ceremony is now settled.
I think where we were at is the administration is going to give us.
Yes, and we are coming back. When is it scheduled? Is it in March? Is it the next meeting?
Oh, what? I'm sorry?
For the observances and celebrations?
Oh, yeah, we can do the next meeting if that's.
When was it April? Wait, we're, we're almost there with, with the research and everything and so we're, we're close. I think, I think, I think, I thought we scheduled that already.
Maybe, I, I had a note that it was for March, so that might go.
Mr. Chair.
Number Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Just for perspective, as someone who asked for the update in March, I think it was the committee's intention to hear the current progress on administration's review. And then in April or May, administration was going to offer its research and any suggestions to the committee. I think that's the schedule. So that's why it's on, that's why it's on the schedule for today.
That's right. So we, we are actually almost ready to come to you with the full thing. Deanne Carroll, who was our social studies coordinator, before she moved over to assessment evaluation, is going to be working on our outcome monitoring stuff for us. She has done an amazing amount of work in researching every single one. And she, we're almost to the point of bringing those. We're just doing some formatting pieces now. We met a couple of days ago. And we're about ready to bring it to you guys. I think it's on, I think it was on forum that we had, that you'd asked us to look into for.
Well, could I ask, when you get it, that you go ahead and provide it and not wait for the next governance meet, right, so we could review?
Review it, yeah, we can, yeah. I, I just want to make sure they're done.
Yeah.
And that they're, that they're self-explanatory. When you read it, you can, because what was, her research was extensive and it wasn't self-explanatory. So that's what we're kind of now is going to be getting it to be self-explanatory.
Anything else? I, I would like to say, I would like to see in the language flexibility for schools to do things at different times of the day. Just because, you know, Goldenview announcements for third hour, because that's when every kid was in their team. Some schools do have a lot of late arrivals or early departure, so they, they choose certain times. And also allowance for if a school's going to have an actual assembly where they'll be playing the national anthem or doing things recognized at the day, that, that can be counted instead of. Some schools don't do much, some schools do a lot. I just hate for them to have to tuck around specifics in a policy or worry that they are sideways with it. Any other questions or comments on item number three? If not, item number four, Board bylaws, nine, three, two, four on our minutes. It's a pretty simple question. I mean, should motions be recorded in the minutes? I, you know, every other school board in the state records motions in their minutes and I believe motions should be recorded in the minutes.
Current policy is there.
Any other comments, questions? And this is before, says a motion, member Don. Well, the last few sets of minutes recently, it was changed from what's written there. And not all motions are now being recorded in the minutes. Motion didn't have a second. It's not being recorded. So that's not, first of all, the Roberts Rules of Order doesn't allow that without a two-thirds vote accepting it from the rules and our own rules require it too. So I believe, I, I would move that this committee recommend to the full board that we comply with the, the existing rules and record all motions that are made during meetings in minutes. Got it. So this, I'm sorry, this is the existing policy in our
May I ask a question? So motions or resolutions shall be recorded as having passed or failed. So if there's no second, it doesn't pass or fail because there's no action on it. And I'm, I'm not arguing to, to not include. I'm just asking, like, it may be, could have a vision to make a little bit more clear.
Well, I guess it's the interpretation of the existing minutes that I believe is not consistent with national experts. There, we got advice from the, from Jurassic Parliament, you could do that. But even Jurassic Parliament says to do that, you have to have a two-thirds vote of the board to accept yourself to Roberts Rules of Order, which is never done. So the national standard and the standard for every other school board in Alaska is that all motions are recorded, whether they're seconded or not. And then if they fail for not having a second, it's failed for not having a second. It's not that they just didn't pass, it's they failed for not having a second. I talked to secretaries of like eight school boards, all the largest school districts in the state, and they said, that's how we do it. We record motion failed for not having a second. I'm trying to think of language. I mean, unless it's asking that we recognize unsupervised motions as motions and that they be recorded.
That makes sense.
Yes, sir. Is, is that what you wish to do?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Motion before us is that motions that are not seconded will be considered motions and will be recorded in the minutes.
I'm not on the governance committee, but I think that aligns very clearly with the statement that motions or resolutions shall be recorded as having passed or failed in the current board policy.
Yeah.
And that's very clear.
Seeing no other hands, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Number Jacobs.
Yeah. And is member Jacobs still connected?
Jacob Swelson and Hagan.
Okay. Member Jacobs, we didn't hear a vote from you.
Yeah.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda. So anyone have other questions to bring to the board? Seeing none, because it's a minute after, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, did you?
I, just a point of clarification. So would, will there be language added or is just the interpretation of what's already there?
It's the interpretation of it's already there.
Okay.
Seeing hearing no other objection, I adjourn the meeting.
Dave, so do you know which meeting? So I, I, I looked back and I know that like February of last year, there was
I wrote it down. It was the one where